I'd like to call the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting to order. I'll ask each commissioner to please respond with a "here." I call out their name. Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Duggan. Here. Commissioner Lysick?
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
Now we'll hear a report from the chief executive and management staff.
Good evening, President Fisher and commissioners. I've got a pretty short meeting for you all tonight, just a couple of agenda items. We'll start with this report. I want to give you an update on some of the things that we've been doing with our regional partners in the community itself. So actually, on November twelfth, Commissioner Fisher and I met with Tigard Mayor Hu, the new mayor of the city Tigard, and the Tigard Public Works Director. It was just an excellent opportunity for us to speak with the mayor, for him to get to know us, and to discuss how Tigard and TBWD work together in service to our communities. So it was a wonderful meeting, and I really enjoyed it. I hope that Commissioner Fisher did as well. And then on October thirtieth, the governor's regional solutions team asked TBWD to present our experience on regional approaches to elected officials in North Tillamook County. This came after the presentation that we did at the infrastructure summit panel discussion in Seaside back in September. So we're working with the governor's regional solutions group to be a resource to them and to increase our profile with that group. Legislative collateral, I think Justin has some information that he's going to provide to you. Our lobbyist CFM Advocates has a new handout that Justin's going to be passing out to increase awareness and support for the WWSS from members of the legislature. So this will be members both in Salem as well as Washington City, and especially their staff. So we've given these handouts, the materials, to CFM both in Salem, DC earlier this week, and so they should already have arrived there and be useful for them. So take a look at those things and let us know what you think. Here's the information that you have in your hands. They're just kind of a quick snapshot so we can put it in the meeting here. Last item I want to report is our upcoming office closure. So in observance of Thanksgiving holiday, the office will be closed on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. I actually will be out on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday that week, taking a little vacation time. And Justin Carlton will be AIC for the CEO at that time. With that, I'll turn over to... Is that me? Can you flip it upside down? Sorry about that, it should be off. Turn over to Tim Boylan, who will present tonight's director's report. Tim?
That's duty calling. Good evening, Chris Fisher and board. I'm here tonight to provide you a little bit of an update about what's going on in IT, what we're working on now, and what's coming up for us. So we'll touch just briefly on the technology refresh. We're just wrapping up. Talk a little bit about some takeaways from a conference I attended in October, and then talk a little bit about our cybersecurity program that we're heading into right now. So as part of our technology refresh over the last biennium, we totally refreshed essentially every piece of network and server and backup equipment in the district, at least in the district offices here. So we replaced everything from our servers, our storage, our backup system, our network switches, our firewalls. Everything is totally refreshed. This is all equipment that was in place when I started with the district in 2017, so it was really due for a refresh. As part of this, we chose a platform for our technology infrastructure that aligns closely with what we expect to need both here at the district going forward as well as what we need for the Willamette. So the equipment, the brand, the models, the manufacturers, the configurations are the exact same platform that we're putting in at the treatment plant, the raw water facility, and all the different Willamette facilities. So it gives us a unified system and fabric of technology that we can manage. It also really drives capacity, speed increases, more flexible configurations. So as the district's needs evolve over time, we can keep pace with those without having to actually purchase new equipment or licenses. It also gives us a much better security visibility into what's going on in the environment as well as control and flexibility. So one good example is we installed the wireless access points around the district. Up to this point, employees all had physical cabling in their cubicles. So every time Pete's team needed to do a building refresh or remodel or move a cube, not only did they need to worry about electricity to each workspace, they also had to worry about cabling for computers. Well, with our new technology infrastructure, we've gone essentially wireless across the building. So we can move people back and forth. They don't have to dock and undock. And as part of that, we also have much better visibility into what data is transiting the wireless network, the speed of the network, the signal strength for every device, where people are struggling. So we can actually get ahead of problems and help resolve those before people have to reach out to IT. So it's a phenomenal upgrade, and we did the last significant move last weekend. And this coming Monday, we're going to be cleaning up some cables, and we call the refresh done. Then we pivot to really focusing on building out the Willamette infrastructure to match. And when those are together, we'll have what we would call a single pane of glass or a single management platform that we can manage the entire district, both for Willamette and TBWD. So the team did a phenomenal job of getting this to the finish line, and it was a really significant lift. Next, I want to touch base on a conference I went to in October. Gartner's a research and advisory firm that we have a subscription to. They really focus a lot on technology and business topics. So they have insight into what's going on around the world from a technology perspective, from trends, how they see different clients reacting to things that are happening in the world and the environment, where vendors are going, where technologies are evolving, things of that nature. So there are symposium conferences, the big premiere conference in the US, and it's attended by folks from a variety of industries and a variety of companies, from smaller companies all the way up to the federal government. So federal government was very light this year due to the shutdown. Military was very light due to the shutdown, but we had a few folks there, and they kept some of those tracks on. So I attended with the intent of participating in four key focus areas. So I went to sessions and education groups for AI, cybersecurity, sourcing and conferencing, or contracting, and things that would drive business value for IT. So I wanted to share a couple little tidbits. This was four days of sessions essentially from seven AM till midnight. It were very, very full days. Some really interesting things we learned. One of the questions I was asked at a recent board meeting is, what are we doing about AI? I had a little bit of feedback about that, but one of the key concepts across the US is that companies are really struggling to find a lot of business value from AI. There's a lot of value in wordsmithing and using AI to help create first drafts of documents and providing syntax and things of that nature. But across the US, there's a lot of struggle to provide business value out of AI. And it's evolving, and it's coming, but it's very slow and evolving. So one of the metrics they said was essentially only one out of five or twenty percent of AI projects are showing any kind of ROI at this point. And there's really one out of, well, it's roughly two percent, are showing any kind of disruptive value to the business. So it's still very early in the hype cycle. There's a lot of expectations, but the technology really isn't there quite yet for the type of value that's really disruptive. The next topic was cybersecurity, and I cherry picked a handful of what I thought were really dramatic statistics. So almost a third of the vulnerabilities that appear within products, that's unpatched Windows machine or an unpatched firewall, things of that nature, due to things like AI. Those vulnerabilities, about a third of them were weaponized within twenty-four hours of them being released out into the world. So the turnaround time from discovering a threat to being attacked by that threat has dropped to less than one day. It's very, very fast turnaround. They said ninety-eight percent of the organizations have a relationship with a breached party. That means somebody we know, somebody we do business with, has suffered some kind of a cybersecurity breach. Somebody in our supply chain has been compromised. It's almost 100% guaranteed. Three-quarters of employees will acquire, modify, or create technology outside IT's vulnerability. We see this on a regular basis. People bring in system solutions, contracts that offer value to the business, but we may or may not have full visibility to those. So we have to have compensating controls, things like strong firewall, strong cybersecurity policy, because the business needs to move forward. They need to get things done. They need to invest in resources that will help their teams. But what that does is adds a certain degree of uncertainty for IT folks. And we have to have the flexibility and the resources to be able to pivot and address those. The next two were very specific. We talked a little bit at the conference about how boards view cybersecurity. And the overwhelming percent believe that cybersecurity is a risk and that it's a threat to shareholder value. Of course, that's more of a public sector or a private sector philosophy, but it's clear that boards across the US are seeing cybersecurity as a risk and a threat that needs to be addressed. So I mentioned AI and cybersecurity. There is a very clear correlation between the evolution of AI and the threats that can be brought against an organization using those AI. So some of the things that they talked about were social engineering, content creation, malware, bypassing controls and logons, password hacks, things of that nature. I watched a demonstration, a real-time demonstration, where they used AI to clone a person and then use that to actually do a social engineering hack and get information out of an employee. It was pretty dramatic when you see it in real time. We dove in a little bit more detail. So there's a whole laundry list of threats used by bad actors that rely on AI. But the good news is vendors and providers of security solutions, as well as just your general business systems, are actively combating these. So there's a lot of threats, but there's also a lot of maturity in the AI security enhancements. Now, the good news is the new infrastructure refresh we put in place utilizes some of these technologies for things like threat intelligence, detecting bad actors, segmenting your network if somebody appears to have gotten in, things of that nature. So we're well-positioned to start taking advancement, advantage of some of these enhancements, but the list of threats is growing. So our goal is to really build a cybersecurity program that allows us to react as quickly as the threats are developing. So into my last slide here, we're really excited to announce that we have brought on a new cybersecurity program manager. He started Monday. His name is Lan, and we brought him on. He was the Chief Information Security Officer for On Point Credit Union before we stole him away. So he started on Monday, and he's working through his onboarding. So our plan for the next ninety days is that we're going to get him exposed to TBWD's business model, our technology infrastructure. He's going to be doing a full assessment of us. The key order of operations for us to build out the program are to really align on what our security framework and standards are going to be. We're going to rely on something from the federal government NIST, which is an industry standard. It's what AWWA uses as their standard. It's what we use for AWIA assessments that we do every five years. So it's a rock-solid foundation that we'll use as our benchmark as we go through and start doing an evaluation of where we do and do not need to put additional resources to beef up our security. So the next steps will be, he's going to be working on a roadmap to take us from an initial assessment all the way up to a tolerable risk level. The whole strategy for building out a cybersecurity program is to identify where our risks are and what our risk tolerance is. So we don't want to put a tremendous amount of money and resources and effort into something that we find an acceptable risk. And we really want to beef up our resources where the district really has a need to make sure we're really protected. So, you know, we would prioritize things like protecting the SCADA environment. We would prioritize things like protecting our financial system, protecting employee data, customer data, things of that nature. We intend to look not only within our walls, in our data center, in our networks. We're going to be looking at our supply chain as well. What security risks do our vendors have? What security risks do our partners have? So you have to move outward from your walls into both your vendor community as well as your partner community to make sure that they're not introducing things into our environment. So it'll be a very structured approach. So between now, now through January roughly, it's going to be getting organized and doing an initial assessment. And so the next time I come back and talk with you, I'll have a report out on what that assessment found and what our plans are to start moving through and addressing some of those risks. So with that, that's a really quick overview of kind of where we at. Any questions?
Tim? How are you going to address the TBWD needs versus the Willamette water supply needs? Because as a Venn diagram, I see them overlapping, but maybe from an IT perspective? Because as you said, with our partners and everything, does there have to be an air gap there?
So there are three. We divide, we divide our technology portfolio and environment into three clumps, if you will. There's the SCADA environment that helps run the water supply. There's the corporate environment that allows us to do business on a day-to-day basis. And then there's the security system environment, which protects our physical facilities and things of that nature. Each one of those environments has their own network. Each one has its own security controls. Each one has its own risk tolerance. So we view the Willamette as an extension of TBWD. So we are tied together so we can manage them seamlessly. Now, on the Willamette side, the operators are essentially going to be extensions of TBWD's team from a technology perspective. We will be provisioning the user IDs and passwords. We will be controlling the logins and the computers and the network and all that. So when folks that are operators walk into the treatment plant, they're walking in essentially as our employees logging into our systems. So we will have both visibility and control over that entire environment. The touchpoints between the treatment plant, for example, and their home organization, they'll be remoting into their home organization from their home base in the treatment plant. So if that makes sense, we're essentially, they become extensions of our team from a technology perspective. Did that answer it? Okay, happy to go into more detail. Quite honestly, it's been, and I'll detour just a little here. We're working with the Hillsborough Operations Team, and we're also working with the Hillsborough IT team. It's been a fantastic collaboration on that side, on that front. We haven't really struggled to get alignment between how we're going to set up security, how we're going to divide up the labor to keep the systems running, who's responsible for which piece. It's been a really positive experience so far. So we haven't run into any really significant challenges with how we're going to get people to do the jobs they need to do in a secure fashion. So I'm confident that we're going to go into this both protected as well as with a high degree of efficiency and making things work.
Thank you.
Anything else I can answer? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tim. Next, we'll move on to Commissioner Communications. The commissioners will now report on meetings attended. Commissioner Doan absent. We'll start with Commissioner Duggan.
Okay. Let's get back. On October twenty-first, I attended the Washington County CCI meeting where Commissioner Jason Snyder attended and talked about his perspectives. On the twenty-second of October, I attended the Metro Impact Meeting where Happy Valley gave a presentation of their downtown district. And there was also a discussion on housing at the meeting. On the twenty-fourth of October, I met with Judy Clark to go over our CEO evaluation. On the eleventh, excuse me, on November third, I met with Paul Matthews. On the fourth, we had our board work session and executive session. On the sixth of November, I attended the Talking Water webinar, where staff did an excellent job showing how to prepare for winter. On the tenth, I attended the webinar put on by SDAO. It was their 2025 legislative update and what they anticipate might be coming up for the short session this February. On November eleventh, I attended, or excuse me, actually, it was on the twelfth, I attended the Washington County CPO Number One Meeting where there were updates. And Lindsay Wacknick did an excellent job handling a number of questions and tiptoeing through fluoride landmines. She did a very good job on it. And then tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Lysick?
On October seventeenth, I attended the BRJOC and JWC board meetings. That was our regular quarterly meeting. On the twenty-first, I met with CEO Matthews for a monthly check-in. On the fourth, our work session. On the eighteenth of this month, monthly check-in with CEO Matthews. This evening's meeting, and I also met with Judy Clark in October. I need to write that date down as well for the CEO evaluation.
Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you. I'm going to go backwards. Tonight's meeting, on the tenth, the one-on-one with Paul, our CEO. On the sixth, the board agenda planning meeting. The fourth, the work session. Then to the meat of the meetings, on the twenty-seventh, we had the WITH meeting. And I'm going to hit up Dave and Joel and probably Paul to maybe help me explain to the board about curtailments, and in particular, that issue of summertime. I don't think you can call it potential curtailments because our withdrawals are never to the point where we would have impact. But that's what I was hoping you would explain better than me. And I just look at Dave, but it doesn't have to be Dave.
I don't think it'll be Dave, but explain it right now? Or would you want to set up a separate meeting?
If you got the ability to tell my fellow board members about it now.
So I would rather not. So a more, a person with better expertise on this is Joel Carey. He's the gentleman that really follows our water rights and just all of that. And I would, I've got a working knowledge of it, and I understand that Joel's got it figured out. And I think the way you presented it, Commissioner Sanders, where the historical withdrawals versus the potential curtailments, there's an offset there that, at least for the foreseeable future, we're not anticipating actual curtailments happening. But Joel Carey would be a much better, much more effective speaker to that. But I'll check with Paul or Joel, anything to add?
Well, let me just say, I think what we can do is schedule this as a work session item and bring Joel in, give him a chance to prepare with some visual aids and really tell the story, because he is the right person to communicate that. I don't know, Joel, if you want to add anything? We'll make that happen, allow it to a board work session.
So as you can see, nobody really wants to touch the water rights issue. But it seems to be that at the lowest flows, if there was a curtailment, the curtailment wouldn't influence our withdrawals because our withdrawals are still less than what the curtailment levels would be. If that makes any sense whatsoever. Supposedly, that's correct. So that was one aspect from the WITH meeting that was pretty critical. Just before that was the Barney Reservoir and Joint Water Commission. If you guys saw the last Thursday memo from Paul, Henry Hagg, Skoggins is like at the bottom ten percent and was even below that before the rainfall of the last couple of weeks. So if you've been out there and wondered why, it is really, really low. Barney isn't as bad, but Skoggins is at the bottom ten percent right now. So rain dances all the way around are needed. The other thing from the JWC, and I'm sure this will come up again because we asked for some additional time, was North Plains has asked to, was asked to contract with the Joint Water Commission to receive water long-term. And one of the things that has to happen, and it was mildly touched on in the meeting, and it probably will need to be detailed and more at a higher level, is I think their initial amount versus their amount over a couple of years will change. They will increase how much they withdraw over time. So that's going to be something that was mentioned but not detailed in the meeting, and that's why everybody asked for more time to review that contract. Then the board meeting, so the WRWC meeting with our partners there, not a whole lot new to talk about there other than still planning on the 2035 to 2035, 2035 to start working on certifying our water rights, which is a weird thing to say because that's ten years from now. And then, other than meeting with Judy and the agenda planning meeting, that's it for me.
I have a lot of the same common meetings as everyone else, so I'll just cover a few here. On the seventeenth of October, I attended with staff the Special District Association Metro Breakfast, where we heard a presentation from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission and got to meet those folks and hear about some issues that are going to be ongoing in the next session and hear about what they're doing with their legislative work group. Then on the fourth of November, I attended a National Special Districts Government Relations briefing to hear updates on the legislation that'll actually recognize special districts in federal statutes so we can get federal funds. Paul mentioned that we met with the mayor of Tigard and then tonight's meeting. Are there any topics to be raised by commissioners? So then we'll go to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment time will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to present public comment? Tim, is there anyone?
So we do have one guest online, Deanna Johnson. Deanna, did you wish to submit a comment this evening? If you are, and I'll give you a moment to unmute if you do want to comment. And if you're on a phone, you would like to press star six. I do see that you're unmuted now, Deanna. Did you want to make a public comment? Okay. I'm going to take that as a no, but if you are having any technical difficulties, please send me a message in the chat, and we will make sure that your comment gets through.
Sam? To our consent agenda then. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which did not require discussion. See, we have several work session and board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I move.
Motion? Do I have a second?
All second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move to our business agenda. Kylie, you're up.
All right. If it feels like we were talking about this two weeks ago, we were. So I'm here tonight to bring you an update and ask for a resolution about our compensation philosophy. Just a quick reminder of our project background. We engaged Troop HR to help us with the classification and compensation project to cover all of these items. And the one that we're focused on tonight is to identify the board's compensation philosophy. The compensation philosophy is in your packet. You'll see that it's grounded in our mission and our values. We want to focus on having market-leading salaries, professional growth opportunities, comprehensive benefits packages for employees and their families, which we do have, and it's open enrollment season right now. So that's all we're thinking about is benefits. We also want to have a team-centered and innovative workplace and then recognize the contributions and service that our employees provide. Here you can see how our values show up in our compensation philosophy. Respect, integrity, service, equity, and safety are all of our values. I'm not going to read all of the words on there, but I do feel that our compensation philosophy reflects our values quite well. Our implementation timeline here. So on the 4th of November, we sought feedback from the board on our proposed philosophy. Tonight, we're here to ask for the adoption of that. And then we'll have our policy alignment and system build going forward. And then in July 1st of next year, we will fully implement that new system. So with that, I would recommend that the board approve Resolution 22-25 to adopt TVWD's compensation philosophy. And I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 22-25, Resolution approving the Twelton Valley Water Desert Compensation Philosophy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Ms. Coach Ruggen, I wholeheartedly second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kylie.
Thank you.
Now we'll have Justin Carlton to give us an update on the local contract review board.
Thank you, President Fisher. Good evening, commissioners. Continuing on with the theme of things you heard a couple of weeks ago. So just to remind the board about the process that we're undergoing for the Local Contract Review Board Rule Review Process. So included in your packet for tonight was the actual proposed LCRB rules for your review. We did do a summary of the changes. And don't worry if you don't remember all the details, because we'll cover that again at the next work session. So at the next work session on December 2nd, we will have staff and legal counsel available to address any questions or comments that you have at that time. If you do have a question or comments that you want us to be aware of in advance, it's always helpful. You can please direct those to me and copy CEO Matthews and our legal counsel, Clark Balfour, on those questions or comments. If there are specific question for legal, feel free to direct those to Clark and copy Paul, Matthews, and myself. It would be appreciated. And then, once we've addressed all the questions and comments at the work session, we're planning on bringing the proposed adoption process at the December board meeting. So enjoy the reading of the LCRB rules. And if you do have any questions or concerns, feel free to let us know.
Be moving to?
Yeah, so we're not going to adjourn. We're going to move to executive session.
Okay, I will now close the rest of session of the board. We'll convene an executive session. Will the recorder please read the script for executive session?
Certainly. An executive session of the board is called under ORS 192.6602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.